Yeah, good, good to see you. Yep, take care. Are you good? You're covered. Okay. Yeah. But yeah. Yeah. They become more. Yeah. Yeah. Definitely an act.
How you doing?
I did as well. Hi, Diana.
So just focus on the question. Do you want plugged in?
Okay.
Batteries just really did on this. On this. Yeah. Left on. This was all plugged. I don't know. I just know that this was. But I mean, it's plugged into this, it's hot.
So.
It's powering it and charging it. It means they must have gotten.
Now, just bring that in case you need it. Because if this thing for some reason dries, you could take that and power it through your. Just in case. Norris.
I think I saw it. I had shot. Is that what happened? On vacation. Yeah. Especially when you like. Do you ever put two? Yeah. No, I didn't hear you share. Yeah.
You're kind.
And that was. Yeah. So like I got to a good point. Oh, because there's. Yes. And I went in a book. So. So. Intentionally. I mean, yeah. Hey, I can't even control. That would be. So. It's not. It's not. Morning. Stop down the corner. Railroad and, you know, like a cross truck. Bob and those officers right there. It's older this morning, but like not at all. Four o'clock with the sun and like down.
No, I, I heard. The only reason I came with them. Under four. You guys, by the way. Underwrite. That's what happens when things come. That's what I'm talking about.
Right. Something.
Hello, how's it going? Hey, what's going on?
Hello.
I mean, I guess the real question is, am I going to be okay? And they say.
No. Sort of to break the scene. I don't want the first show, but I also, you know. We live in Salzburg. And we saw this. And we saw at the IMAX. We could be here. He saw this IMAX. And it's like the bridge of the creation. And then like first.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm David Reynolds. I'll be moderating tonight's meeting. You may have noticed that the town report this year is dedicated to the memory of Ed Zuccaro, who's our long-term town agent. And also sadly, this weekend, we lost Sheriff James Hayman, Hemant. And so after the pledge to the flag, I'd like to have a moment of silence for them and for all the others we've lost this year. So would you join me in a pledge to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So this is an informational meeting. There will be no votes taken tonight. Voting is tomorrow from eight AM to seven PM at the town offices at Depot Square for the election of town officers and for the voting on the warning articles. The warning articles will be addressing tonight may be found on pages fifty-nine and sixty of the town report. First, we're going to hear from Karen Conroy, Superintendent of Schools, to review Articles one through three. Then we'll hear from Chad Whitehead, Town Manager, to review Articles four through six and Article twenty-eight, as well as Article one of the Special Services District. Following each of the presentations, we'll take questions and comments. I'd ask you to come to the mic, state your name, and ask your question or make your comment. And in the interest of time, keep your remarks brief. I will call on others before I call on anybody who wants to speak again, if anybody hasn't, for those who haven't spoken first. Following these presentations, we'll hear from anybody who wants to speak to the Special Appropriations, Articles seven through twenty-seven, and then we'll adjourn the meeting until tomorrow for the voting. So without further ado, we'll hear from Karen Conroy, Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. I really appreciate the turnout. I believe we have folks that are joining us online as well, which we may also take questions from. This evening, I will recognize a couple of our school board members that have been with us for a period of time, talk about our vision, share some information about our projected enrollments, our strategic goals, and our budget development process, and then present our proposed budget for FY twenty-six, and then take questions. So I appreciate the support of all of our school board members, but did want to recognize two members of our board that have been serving us for many, many years, Eileen Dickinson and Tom Huntington. They're not seeking for reelection, but I did want to recognize them for their many years of service to our community and to our students. And if they are here, go ahead and stand. Thank you. I can say our school board has been very supportive through this process, but also we had a different process this year, really understanding and listening to what we learned from last year and understanding the concerns that many of you are facing when it comes to our taxes. I did want to reiterate that our vision for our school district is every St. Johnsberry student will follow their unique path to become a caring, respectful, lifelong learner who positively contributes to the global community. And in all of our work, whether it's with our staff, with our parents, with our community, our focus is on our students and their learning. And throughout this process, I'll, I'll share with you how we incorporate that in our decisions. Just to give you an update on our current enrollment for the school district, we currently have about a hundred and, one thousand forty-five students, six hundred and seventy-seven students enrolled in pre-K through eight. And then we also have in grades nine through twelve, our, our high school students. When we look at enrollment over the last several years, it's, has stayed pretty steady. We have encouraging trends, unlike what you might hear at the state level. We have really seen our elementary enrollment stay steady and just a slight decline in our high school students over the last few years. But we're unlike many other school districts in the state. For the St. Johnsberry School, we're projecting average class sizes of about seventeen students. This is set by the Board of Education, sets maximum class sizes per grade. But right now, we're projecting next year, we'll have about seventeen students in each of our classes. And the, in the grade cohorts, I'll call them, they could range anywhere from fifty-four students to seventy-five students in our K through eight programming, with maximum class sizes set by the state. And K through three is typically twenty students. And in four through eight, our maximum class sizes are right now at twenty-five. For our high school students, we have, as you're quite aware, utilized school choice. In this graphic here, we're displaying, you know, where the majority of our students choose right here in our community at St. Johnsberry Academy. Seventy-four percent of our students attend there. We have about ten percent of our students attending Linden Institute, eight percent attending other schools, six percent in Arlington, and two percent attending Danville School. And as part of this budget that we are presenting, sometimes it's forgotten and is often referred to as a school budget, but it's really a school district budget. And our high school choice cost for tuition is also include, included in this budget proposal. As part of our budget development timeline, we took a different approach this year, and we started extremely early in the process, in July through September. And we really tried to involve multiple stakeholders in engagement opportunities to hear from our staff, our parents, our community, as we're making decisions moving forward. We included two community budget forums. We provided surveys. We also ramped up our communication this year, really trying to keep our efforts at informing our communities through newsletters and multiple other means of updating with like our website, trying to make it as transparent as possible and trying to really build the trust of the community. October, we did have, look at our programming changes. Our Director of Finance really tried to pull together our upcoming budget numbers. We provided first drafts to the board. In November, budget presentations in December, January, and again, really trying to take input from all stakeholders involved. In building the budget, we still are on, we're currently on our third year of our strategic plan, so we kept our fourth year in mind as we move forward with our strategic, the main goals around excellence, wellness, connections, and our organization. And it has been very helpful for us to focus on these goals and the strategies associated with each of these goals as we make our decisions and how we move the district forward. We do know that we did take in mind the financial implications of some of these strategies and have delayed some of them, knowing that this is not the right time to move forward. But for the majority, we've stuck to our strategic plan goals. Along with looking at our goals, we also use a process, and we do this annually. It's called our Continuous Improvement Plan. It's something we do for federal grants, but also as we're looking at the strategies that we want to implement in the school, in the district. We really take a data inventory of identifying all of our needs. We set goals, goals for our students, and we set SMART goals related to student achievement. And then we launch those strategies during the school year and use a number of different tools from both state and local assessments to monitor our achievement to these goals and then take a look and evaluate how the plan work, and works. And quite often, we have to reevaluate how we're going to move forward and how to really move our, our school and our staff and our students to meet the needs of the students and also to move us in the right direction. What was a little different this year in our initial budget conversations with the board, they, I can say they clearly heard and what happened last year and what was going on at a state level. And so when we first presented initial numbers to the board, last year, we had a twenty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-dollar budget. What it would mean if it was a level-funded budget versus level service. And so level service would be keeping everything that we're doing and continuing those processes as is. It would be looking at a four-point-nine-percent increase. And when we first presented this to the board in our first financial meeting, and we did have community input as well, they basically told us that we had to go back and relook at our budget, and they would not support anything over three-point-five-percent increase. So it did have us go back and really look at, you know, how are you going to continue to service and support the students and staff in the school, but keep it at a budget that they felt would be more reasonable to present to the community. So we did look at a number of, a number of data points, anything from enrollment projections, our current staffing models, and we really consulted with a multiple number of stakeholders in this process. And ultimately, we made some significant changes, but it actually came out with an increase of three-point-one-nine-percent. And there were a number of proposed staffing changes with reductions to support students around paraprofessionals. There were a number of unfilled positions that we were trying to hire over multiple years. We just haven't been able to hire them, but they've been in our budget. And so we looked at reducing three regular education paraprofessionals and also seven special education paraprofessionals. And then due to enrollment numbers and the incoming kindergarten students that we are anticipating, we did identify one kindergarten teacher that we would reduce. Our model for many, many years, and it may date back to when you first consolidated your schools and made those hard decisions, we have four teachers per grade. And right after COVID, we were trying to support the needs of our younger learners, and so we added a fifth kindergarten teacher. And so because of the enrollment numbers coming in lower than we haven't seen over multiple years, we decided to reduce that kindergarten teacher. So we're down to four. When I mentioned kind of our process, when we're looking at data and learning about our decisions, last year, we made the decision to cut a fifth and sixth grade teacher. Again, it was looking at similar data with enrollment numbers. It was not a good decision, and we have decided to add them back into the budget. It wasn't good for our teachers. It wasn't good for our students, and we even received feedback from parents. So we have added back a fifth and sixth grade teacher. So we have four in each grade. And we've also increased our special education teacher by one FTE. We found additional reductions with miscellaneous stipends for staff, reduction in some of our field trips, professional development, and we're also looking to use some of our capital reserve that we have available of fifty-one-thousand dollars to reduce some of our deferred maintenance costs. So with all those budget changes, we are proposing a budget of thirty-million-two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars. It is a three-point-one-nine-percent increase, but it's actually a decrease compared to last year on our taxes. So we're estimating right now a tax rate of a dollar seventy-six, which is three cents less than last year. Some of you may ask, how can that be? But we, we actually spent a lot of time working with our independent schools and gathering information on our families that was able to, one of the calculators and, or one of the, the items that's used in calculating the tax rate is actually your weighted students. And so we really had to work hard to get our enrollment numbers up, our weighted student numbers. And we're able to do this with the help of our independent schools and really trying to identify those students that are identified as meeting the poverty levels. And so where a lot of schools throughout the state have seen a decline in weighted pupils, it's called long-term weighted pupils, we actually had four additional students. So that denominator that we used to divide into our cost per pupil actually decreased our tax rate. And I'll show another slide coming forward to explain it a little bit more. When you look at the budget at a glance, another, another point to make, which is not typically what you see in most school districts, the salary and benefits are usually eighty percent of your costs of your budget. But because we have a non-operating high school and we're tuitioning out, our costs for salary and benefits for regular ed and our special ed teachers and support staff and district office is actually at forty-six percent of our budget. The remainder of the budget is related to the cost for the facilities, contracted services, transportation, also any of our tuition. So our high school tuition, which is twenty-seven percent of our budget. We also have tuition for students attending therapeutic programs, both in this community and many miles away. Also, our universal pre-K program, we also pay tuition for the ten hours of pre-K for students that are attending private and independent programs. When we look at the big increases in our budget, our salary expenses has increased by four percent, even though we are decreasing the number of full-time equivalent staff. There is, due to our negotiated agreements, a salary increase. So that was a four-percent increase in salary expenses, three-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-seven. You've heard about the significant benefit increases statewide. We are showing eleven-percent increase in our benefit expenses, another three-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand. Also, our high school tuition, even though our enrollment is down for next year by about ten students, we did see a high school tuition increase of a hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety dollars. And the last large, really primary factor is transportation for special ed increased by twenty-four percent at ninety-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-five. What we're finding is that the therapeutic programs in our community cannot support the needs of our students. Their enrollments are full, and so we're having to transport students over an hour away in some cases to support their needs and provide them the educational support that they need. So those are the four primary budget increase factors in our comparison from FY twenty-five to FY twenty-six. And this is the chart that actually displays our homestead tax, tax rate calculation. The last couple of years, how this is calculated has changed, but I'll point out a few.
Needs, we set goals, goals for our students. And we set SMART goals related to student achievement. And then we launch those strategies during the school year. And use a number of different tools from both state and local assessments to monitor our achievement to these goals and then take a look and evaluate how the plan work and works. And quite often, we have to reevaluate how we're going to move forward and how to really move our, our school and our staff and our students to meet the needs of the students and also to move us in the right direction. What was a little different this year in our initial budget conversations with the board, they, I can say they clearly heard and what happened last year and what was going on at a state level. And so when we first presented initial numbers to the board, last year, we had a $29,281,000 budget. What it would mean if it was a level funded budget versus level service. And so level service would be keeping everything that we're doing and continuing those processes as is. It would be looking at a 4.9% increase. And when we first presented this to the board in our first financial meeting, and we did have community input as well, they basically told us that we had to go back and relook at our budget and they would not support anything over 3.5% increase. So it did have us go back and really look at, you know, how are you going to continue to service and support the students and staff in the school, but keep it at a budget that they felt would be more reasonable to present to the community. So we did look at a number of, a number of data points, anything from enrollment projections, our current staffing models, and we really consulted with a multiple number of stakeholders in this process. And ultimately, we made some significant changes, but it actually came out with an increase of 3.19%. And there were a number of proposed staffing changes with reductions to support students around paraprofessionals. There were a number of unfilled positions that we were trying to hire over multiple years. We just haven't been able to hire them, but they've been in our budget. And so we looked at reducing three regular education paraprofessionals and also seven special education paraprofessionals. And then due to enrollment numbers and the incoming kindergarten students that we are anticipating, we did identify one kindergarten teacher that we would reduce. Our model for many, many years, and it may date back to when you first consolidated your schools and made those hard decisions, we have four teachers per grade. And right after COVID, we were trying to support the needs of our younger learners. And so we added a fifth kindergarten teacher. And so because of the enrollment numbers coming in lower than we haven't seen over multiple years, we decided to reduce that kindergarten teacher. So we're down to four. When I mentioned kind of our process, when we're looking at data and learning about our decisions, last year, we made the decision to cut a fifth and sixth grade teacher. Again, it was looking at similar data with enrollment numbers. It was not a good decision and we have decided to add them back into the budget. It wasn't good for our teachers. It wasn't good for our students and we even received feedback from parents. So we have added back a fifth and sixth grade teacher. So we have four in each grade. And we've also increased our special education teacher by one FTE. We found additional reductions with miscellaneous stipends for staff, reduction in some of our field trips, professional development, and we're also looking to use some of our capital reserve that we have available of $51,000 to reduce some of our deferred maintenance costs. So with all those budget changes, we are proposing a budget of $30,217,239. It is a 3.19% increase, but it's actually a decrease compared to last year on our taxes. So we're estimating right now a tax rate of $1.76, which is three cents less than last year. Some of you may ask, how can that be? But we, we actually spent a lot of time working with our independent schools and gathering information on our families that was able to, one of the calculators and, or one of the, the items that's used in calculating the tax rate is actually your weighted students. And so we really had to work hard to get our enrollment numbers up, our weighted student numbers. And we're able to do this with the help of our independent schools and really trying to identify those students that are identified as meeting the poverty levels. And so where a lot of schools throughout the state have seen a decline in weighted pupils, it's called long-term weighted pupils, we actually had four additional students. So that denominator that we used to divide into our cost per pupil actually decreased our tax rate. And I'll show another slide coming forward to explain it a little bit more. When you look at the budget at a glance, another, another point to make, which is not typically what you see in most school districts, the salary and benefits are usually 80% of your costs of your budget. But because we have a non-operating high school and we're tuitioning out, our costs for salary and benefits for regular ed and our special ed teachers and support staff and district office is actually at 46% of our budget. The remainder of the budget is related to the costs for the facilities, contracted services, transportation, also any of our tuition. So our high school tuition, which is 27% of our budget. We also have tuition for students attending therapeutic programs, both in this community and many miles away. Also, our universal pre-K program, we also pay tuition for the 10 hours of pre-K for students that are attending private and independent programs. When we look at the big increases in our budget, our salary expenses has increased by 4%, even though we are decreasing the number of full-time equivalent staff. There is, due to our negotiated agreements, a salary increase. So that was a 4% increase in salary expenses, $373,757. You've heard about the significant benefit increases statewide. We are showing 11% increase in our benefit expenses, another $373,000. Also, our high school tuition, even though our enrollment is down for next year by about 10 students, we did see a high school tuition increase of $127,290. And the last large, really primary factor is transportation for special ed increased by 24% at $95,575. What we're finding is that the therapeutic programs in our community cannot support the needs of our students. Their enrollments are full and so we're having to transport students over an hour away in some cases to support their needs and provide them the educational support that they need. So those are the four primary budget increase factors in our comparison from FY '25 to FY '26. And this is the chart that actually displays our homestead tax, tax rate calculation. The last couple of years, how this is calculated has changed, but I'll point out a few items of, of interest. Our total expenditures again are going up 3.19%, which is $935,486. We are seeing a slight increase in our estimates, these are all estimates, for our revenues, an additional $96,338,000. So this will help offset our request to the state for net education spending. And so we're, we're asking, and what you'll see on the ballot, and I'll also show you that on another slide, is a 3.48% increase in our net education spending, but also a 3.24% in our spending per pupil. I mentioned the long-term weighted average daily membership. This is our student count and it includes waitings for students with poverty, our ELL, our English language learners. There's different percentages that we get for those students. So we actually have seen an increase. And when that is divided into the net education spending amount, it's our education spending per pupil, which is $13,359. The dollar yield right now, which is set by the tax commissioner, was set in December at $8,553. We're not sure if the governor has proposed a plan to use an additional $77 million to offset any increases that our towns are, are seeing. And it could bring us down a few more cents, but it hasn't been approved. But we're looking at, in this new calculation with the yield, it would be $1.55 for the education, school district tax rate. Your common level appraisal, which has now been set at a state level, this is not your local common level of appraisal for your properties, is at 88%, giving us an estimated tax after the common level appraisal at a dollar, rounded up to $1.76. A lot of numbers, how it's calculated keeps changing, has changed the last two years and there's proposals to change again. To give you a little perspective, if you want to look historically, a comparison year after year, we've gone and calculated it backwards. You can see how it has changed. Our school district tax rate is at a lower rate than we've had for many years. And if you calculate it back based on your common level appraisal, you know, until you have your appraisals done in your community, it does still add additional tax to your tax rate. So it's at $1.76. And so again, what we're estimating, if you have a home that has a property value of $100,000, I believe it's more like $157,000 it was last year for the average property owner in St. Johnsbury, we're looking at a 3% decrease in the tax rate compared to last year, which is $33 decrease in your taxes that are due. And again, this is the article that we'll be asking you to vote on. It does mention the $30,217,239 expenditure budget, which is a 3.24%, 3.24% increase when you're looking at the ed spending. So it's an increase from last year to $13,539. But the budget is a 3.9% increase in our expenditures. Again, it's using the weighted pupils calc, calculation, which has taken place the last couple of years. And it does give us waiting for those students that are disadvantaged or English-speaking households. We did include additional information in the town report. Hopefully you grabbed a report. We did include a line-by-line detailed in the report this year, but also I like to call them our brag book, you know, our pages where we should be very proud of what we're able to offer our students in this community. So we've shared information on, you know, what, what we're working on, the students that we're supporting, the needs that they have. So there's additional pages in your town report. Don't hesitate to reach out if you have any questions and I will also take questions this evening.
Yes, you will. If you have a question, come to the mic, as I said, and state your name and ask your question or make your comment and Karen will be happy to answer.
Hi, I'm Sanford Boyle. I had a question concerning the benefits. Do we work within the state to, to purchase, I'm assuming healthcare, you know, or is a big one? Or do we do that as the town, school, district?
It's a great question because it's changed just in the last couple of years. It's actually negotiated at a state level. So they have representation from the schools, but also from the unions. And they make those decisions based on discussions with the healthcare providers.
With each school district throughout the state? I mean, is that all the purchasing power that, that the state's using?
Initially, I believe that's why they moved in that direction. We have not seen the benefit of that, but it's done at a state level, so it's consistent throughout the whole state.
So everybody's paying the same rates?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Anybody else?
My name is Carl Johnson. I'm a St. Johnsbury resident. I'm a teacher at this school. I'm a co-president of the Teachers Association, our union. I have a sixth grade student here, an 11th grader at the academy. And I was really heartened to drive into the parking lot today and see so many cars. Oh, we're packed up to the pool. That's great. I think that, I, I summarize sort of why I choose to come to these, because I believe in the common good. I think that that's why we're all here, because we believe in the common good. We believe that our community benefits from a lively debate about our future. We believe that we benefit from hearing from our neighbors. I'd like to bring a voice into this conversation. It's the voice of a seventh grader who wrote a really nice paragraph explaining how the light in this room that allows me to see you and you to see me and the stuff that shot through your head at the dentist's office is basically the same stuff. While X-rays and visible light are not identical, they do have some similarities. Two elements that X-rays and visible light have in common are they both come from stars which radiate a great deal of electromagnetic energy. They can also help you see things. Light shows you objects and X-rays can be used to show bones and other stuff in your body. He has a quote from one of our texts, hot objects like the sun radiate a great deal of electromagnetic energy. The sun is a star. Like I said, stars create electromagnetic energy. Another quote, this higher ener, so X-rays have higher energy. This higher energy allows X-rays to travel through some types of matter such as your skin and your muscle. It goes on. It's really, really well put together. He talks about the differences. X-rays have a shorter wavelength and a higher frequency than, than, than visible light. In conclusion, I've shown that X-rays and visible light have similarities and also differences. I think it's great and I love working with the seventh graders at this school. It is an immense privilege to get to work with your students. And I really appreciate the opportunity to do so and I hope I get to do so for a long, long time. Who are we if we don't believe in our community's children? I have a student at the academy who is absolutely thriving. He is in the 11th grade. He's getting advice. I'm thinking about college that I haven't even thought of. His teachers know him so well and they challenge him in meaningful ways. It's cost-effective if you look at the cost of the academy tuition and compare it to other high schools in the state, it is comparable. We are so fortunate to have this institution. I do think that if the academy put its institutional weight behind this budget, it would pass easily. In a few minutes, we're going to hear from all of our worthy civic institutions about why investing in our community is money well-spent. We have heard from, from representatives of the school board about how this school is meeting this moment with energy and hope and good cheer and investing in our children is money well-spent. I don't know that I've ever heard from the academy at one of these and that's perplexing. Let's talk about why education is so expensive. Let's have that, that's what we're here for, right? Healthcare, that's the number one. You think I like paying more than anyone else in any other industrial country and not getting better results? You think I like carrying around a bloated insurance industry on top of a bloated pharmaceutical industry, on top of a very expensive medical industry? But I'm not giving up my public healthcare and going private, not without a fight. I think we saw recently how few tears would be shed if we got rid of private insurers who cost too much till you need them and then they're gone. That's the system that works for them. It works very well and it's evidenced by the enormous compensation, the obscene compensation of their CEOs. Who's, what, why does anyone have a problem with the union? I don't understand that at all. I, I make $70,000 and I know I'm not overpaid. I know it. I know that schools are having a hard time finding people that are willing to do what I do and I do it with good cheer. I love it. So we, we're always talking about, this, this hasn't been, this year, we haven't heard that and maybe I was premature and maybe I was a little bit sort of primed for a fight that isn't necessary. Maybe this, this budget will pass and, and, and I think it should. But I keep hearing about how education is too expensive, but no one's willing to talk about what programs they would cut. What are we going to cut? I, I know I'm not overpaid and I think our, our students are, are, are worth investing in their artistic ability, their musical ability, their, their willingness to do brave things like perform on the stage, their, their, their willingness to try out for an athletic team and, and take enormous risks in that way. It's a, it's a wonderful thing. I don't know where the fat is. I know I'm at my limit and, and so I'll just end up quickly. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That seventh grader understands how your cell phone talks to your loved ones and how your cell phone talks to a cash register. Vote yes. Our children are worth it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have people watching on Zoom too and this, she's bringing the question for, from that person.
Okay, we have a, a viewer with a question. It's Brittany Petty. She's the parent of a current first grader at our school and a taxpayer. She's also a challenger for the two-year seat for tomorrow. Her question is, the first grade para that's being taken away, is that going to be affecting the incoming kindergarteners or the current first grade cohort? And is there a decrease in the cohort in kindergarten?
It is a decrease in the cohort for the kindergarten group. That is why we're reducing the full-time teacher from five full-time kindergarten teachers to four. The para that's in reference are not currently filled. Whenever we reduce a paraprofessional, it does have an impact on our students. But we are hopeful that we're still be able to support the students in the classroom with the adults that are there or, or scheduled to be there.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Mark Camp. I'm a St. J resident and taxpayer. I just wanted to understand, I, I think you said that the seven paras, and then I think there were three other paras who are being reduced. My understanding is those are all currently unfilled positions, so there's no, no actual layoffs? It's, it's just a, a budgetary reduction? It's not a actual expense reduction? Is that accurate?
The kindergarten teacher is, but the others are unfilled, the other paraprofessionals.
Going once? All right, well, thank you, Karen.
Yes, thank you.
And now we'll hear from Chad Whitehead on the town budget.
So this was a photo that we were trying to get on the front page of the town report. We just could not get it come out. I don't even see the different stages of the eclipse, but it just couldn't quite make it come out well. So I'm Chad Whitehead, town manager. This is my ninth year up here doing this and I greatly appreciate everybody's support and the opportunity to be able to be here. I was going to start off with one of the bond articles. It's a, it's a water improvement project on Bay Street. So first of all, try to introduce the select board. We've got Steve Isham, Frank, M. Saul, Dennis Smith, Tracy Xiao, and Brendan Hughes, who is out of the country at the moment. So the article reads as follows, shall general, and this is wordy and I'm sorry, but it's the way we have to do it. Shall general obligation bonds or notes in an amount not to exceed $2,765,000, subject to reduction by the application of federal and state grants and aid and reserve funds be issued for the purpose of financing the cost of making public water supply system improvements within and apparent to the Bay Street area? The estimated cost of such improvements being $2,765,000. And I thank Eli for helping me put that language together. And so the Bay Street project is, it's part of a larger project, but we've got grant money secured to, to cover most of the expenses for the other phases except for the water. So what we're asking the voters is for funds to replace the failed river crossing that will be replaced with a new bridge crossing underneath the Lower Portland Street Bridge. It will replace It will replace approximately 3,000 feet of 12-inch, or 3,000 feet of unlined cast iron with a new 12-inch water main, about 400 feet of 8-inch water main and four hydrants. The project also creates some redundancies for our river crossings. We've got two others. But if any of them has to be taken out of service, the redundancy in the river crossings ensures that we've got adequate fire protection on this side of the river. So it starts out up north on, underneath, underneath the Portland Street Bridge. It'll extend, it'll tie into an existing main that comes down off in Portland Street there, extend across the bridge, and then travels the length of Bay Street down to ultimately connect down by the wastewater treatment plant. It also makes some connections up onto Eastern Avenue to some existing water mains that are there. Those were rebuilt in the 90s and are in good, good condition. The project cost estimate for the water improvements is $2,674,800. Assuming a 40-year note at 0% interest and no principal forgiveness or any grants, that would represent a 4.7% increase in our water rates. So the funding sources that we will be seeking, if the voters approve this, would be the Vermont Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund. My, my assumption is that's probably going to be the most competitive for the town, but also we'll be applying and seeking funding from USDA Rural Development. I figured out like the impact on rates right now, figuring on no principal forgiveness. Town of St. Johnsbury generally because of our, our water rates and our, our, our overall economy. We generally are qualified for principal forgiveness coming from the state. However, with the uncertainty on those funding programs, it's best just to not count on that and make your decision based on, we're probably going to have to borrow the full amount on this project. Hopefully not. We've been very successful in the past, getting anywhere from 75% to even 50%, or 50% up to 75% loan forgiveness or grants on projects such as this. So I mentioned that there are other aspects to this. There is a combined sewer separation portion of this, about 2,800 feet of new sewer and storm. This will be funded, which, this will be funded with CSO funding that we have already secured and a grant in the amount of $2,87,617. It's a 100% grant for the project, and it's already been dedicated to St. Johnsbury. Also, the La Moya Valley Rail Trail Connection, that's 2,200 feet of new separate multipurpose path along Bay Street. Funding was secured there through NVRC, USDA, and the EDA in the amount of $1,725,440. I do need to do some research on a portion of those funds to see if we need to make any adjustments, but as far as I know, at this moment, those funds are secure for this project. And so just to recap on this, I won't make everybody listen to me reread the entire bond article again. It is in the town reports, but the vote will be, it's part of the ballot. Just so that people know, the, the fees for this or the impacts for this are paid back using the, they're using the water rates. It doesn't impact taxes. However, the voters of the town of St. Johnsbury need to provide the bond authority just through statute. So that will be on the ballot tomorrow, as everybody knows, March 4th, from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the Welcome Center. So now I'll jump into. So everything I'm going over tonight is included in some fashion in your town reports, so I encourage you to take a look at those. Those can be found on the website. Also, voting information can be found if you go up to the upper right-hand corner and click on that link and then follow it all the way down to the bottom. There's sample ballots. There's detail on the budget as well as a link to our town reports. Actually, I take it back. The link to the town reports is over under announcements, so you would scroll down on this main page until you see announcements, and you can see a link for the town report. They're also available here at the Athenum and at 1187. So there's a pile of them at the police and fire station. So 2024 was definitely a memorable year. You know, it was defined by several different events, at least in my mind, thinking back, starting with the eclipse on April 8th. There was significant planning and efforts by the museum, Discover St. Johnsbury, and the town leading up to the event. We opened and managed six parking lots around town. Thank, you know, the town school for allowing us to park cars here. RCT also operated shuttle. St. J Academy provided a bus to help move people around. And I think everybody was uncertain what it was going to look like right up until it was here. The weather was beautiful. People transitioned. Our information shows us that we saw 18,000 visits to St. Johnsbury. That's beyond our existing residents. So 18,000 people came here from 26 other states. Restaurants and businesses exceeded capacity, and from my perspective, we had an overwhelmingly positive feedback on both the way that the event was organized, how friendly our town was. It was a mass exodus, and I will never forget watching the fire truck at five minutes after the eclipse is done, trying to go down Eastern Avenue. Brad, I think you guys made it to the bottom of the hill, but Calix was coming in on another angle to get to the call, and they finally just had to stop. But remember people rolling their windows down and just saying, sorry, what we did to your town? But when we picked up the barricades for where Main Street was closed, members of Public Works and I grabbed trash bags and was like, let's head down the street and get all the trash picked up before we get it opened up. And we came back from the other end with empty bags. It was really well taken care of by the people that came and visited us. And thank everybody for all their efforts, the churches, all the property owners that let people use their, their lawns for, for, for viewing. The other events, this is a slide from the National Weather Service. I think it's pretty interesting going back to 1894, the five wettest days in St. Johnsbury. Of course, September, or sorry, July 11th flood was on there. At one point, it was the third wettest day in St. Johnsbury. But what really hits me is the 8.08 inches jumping up from almost five inches. That happened on July 30th. So the July 11th rains from Tropical Storm Barrel resulted in flooding of the Sleepy River and Passumpseck River. Those floods peaked much later and higher than predicted. Flash flooding also damaged several Class III roads and damaged significant amounts of private property. The morning of July 30th, 2024, I was woken up by a call from dispatch, and I was pretty groggy. It was like 3:00 in the morning, and they, all they said was it was worse than last time. And somebody in the team told me to be prepared for fatalities, which, thank goodness, we didn't have any. We did lose a few people between here and Linneville in the first flood event. But although we're not certain yet, what our total reimbursement amount, our damage inventory that we've completed from just the first storm, and a lot of those inventories carried over into the second storm, were just over 3.2 million. And we are hopeful that we will see as much as, what I've heard, is as much as 97% of our flood-related expenses reimbursed to the town. We did get significant impacts in all of our departments. Everybody was working. We saw significant volunteer efforts and mutual aid came from Berry City Rutland, the little town of Morgan, and multitude of contractors fell onto St. Johnsbury. This is a delivery of water that came over from Berry City. And that was in response, the Berry City manager was on the phone to me the next day after the first flood event, and he said, you guys were here for us last year. We've got people on our way. And just didn't even question it, so it was really great to see. And then on December 13th, shooting of Captain Dale Jason Gray while on duty. This heinous crime impacted the entire community. Captain Gray continues to recover from his injuries as we continue to keep him and his family in our thoughts. Scott Mason is facing charges of second-degree attempted murder, and five additional people are facing charges in the incident. Now that I've thoroughly depressed everybody, we did have, there were several other very positive things about being in St. J, as we've seen with our annual events between the summer bandstand concerts and Final Fridays and food events. Memorial Day and Veterans Day parades. We saw the Halloween Parade, Bike Safety Fair fall for St. Johnsbury. Farmers Market continued, and I listed the eclipse here again because I really liked it. We should do that again. So to make events like this in St. Johnsbury possible, there are several organizations working tirelessly. And if I forget any organization that's out there, please just give me a call and make sure I get it on here for next year. So NVDA is our economic development organization. They provide assistance on multiple projects. St. Johnsbury Academy not only provides us with world-class education for our high school, but an exceptional recreation program that's gone with us. Although in this budget that we'll be presenting tonight, the intent is to transfer the recreation back to the town. We will still be using St. Johnsbury Academy as a partner to keep this programming moving forward. Town School Systems also provides exceptional education and support for our children. The space for meetings such as this, anybody's got kids in the summer soccer program or any of the other athletic programs here knows the space and their fields and their values to the town. St. J Community Baseball is deep-rooted here and is another invaluable asset for the community. Discover St. Johnsbury coordinates our downtown programs for local businesses as well as numerous events at the Welcome Center and throughout town. I already mentioned them. Catamount Arts brings art and music into the community on a regular basis, including tremendous efforts to continue their first night. And St. Johnsbury Athenum, they provide programs for our children, teens, and adults throughout the year. The History and Heritage Center is a wealth of knowledge of where we as a town came from. The St. Johnsbury Band plays at all of our parades and our events and offers free concerts in the park, which includes ice cream. Dog Mountain remains open to the pet lovers and continues to provide the location for the Levitt Amp Music Series. Thanks to their work as well as work from Catamount Arts. I didn't forget you, Adam. Fairbanks Museum. It's so rooted in St. Johnsbury that it is included in our charter. So congratulations, Adam, for the completion of the tang. I know you had that done last year, but. Northeast Kingdom Chamber of Commerce provides more regional approach to our, our economic support. And then this is not an all-inclusive list. I mean, I did include Calix here, but we also get help from NKHS, NECA, The Hub, Umbrella, Kiwanis, Elks Club, Rotary, VFW, the American Legion, and the Moose Club. And so thank you for all these organizations and the partnerships that you provide us. So starting as I go through the highlights of each department, town reports do have some more additional information in there. It's provided by each department head or chief. I encourage you to take a read through that. So the Fire Department responded to 1,828 incidences, including fires, medical assists, hazardous materials, car accidents, rescue calls. Their average response time was lowered again this year by a few seconds, three minutes and seven seconds. They house assets that can be used throughout the state for hazardous material operations, decontamination, specialty rescues, including rope confined space, trench rescue, et cetera. They do have water rescue capabilities. The town is an ISO 4/4X rating, which is based on a scale of one to 10, with one being the best. These good ratings help our businesses and residents with reduced property insurance premiums. So similar to surrounding volunteer fire departments, St. Johnsbury struggles with filling vacancies within our call staff. Even though the training requirements and demands of the job are challenging, the opportunity to serve your community is a central role is extremely rewarding. If you or anybody that you know would like to become part of the St. J Fire Team, please reach out to Brad Reed. And just to note, we have ordered our fire apparatus. I think we thought they're going to be here in May. Is it, they're pushed back now? Trying to remember, you told me August or September? And so we do have two fire checks. They have been ordered. We have secured them, and we will be receiving them this next summer. So I can't talk about our Police Department without talking about our staffing. Our current staffing shortages are significant, affecting the department. The chief, Chief Pierce is obviously aware, and he's been working with my office and his department to help find solutions. Oh, I got ahead of myself. So while we embrace community policing initiatives and work with other agencies to find alternatives to arrests and incarceration, we will still focus our duty to enforce the law and bring offenders before the courts. We appreciate our residents' participation to strive to make our community safe and crime-free. So the Police Department responded to 4,529 incidents this last year and made 263 arrests in 2024. Our Police Department is immediately available within the village's limits for emergency response, and our police officers meet or exceed state minimum training requirements. So this last year, we did develop the Public Safety Task Force, who works with state and state agencies and contractors to evaluate our Police Department's call volume. Roughly 11% of our Police Department's call volume is generated by just 20 individuals. And a significant amount of those calls are not crime-related. They're more of a nuisance call. So we currently now meet two times a month with human services providers and partners, including the school, to review Police Department call logs for the past two weeks to identify any resources any of those departments may have to try to alleviate going on future calls. It is relatively new. We've got new partnerships, and so we're going to continue to do, have those meetings and do what we can to try to meet the needs of our community and relieve some of the stress from our Police Department. So in addition to 24-hour, seven-day-a-week fire and police coverage, our dispatchers remain by the phones, ready for emergencies. Call volumes continue to increase year over year, and last year dispatchers responded to 17,310 calls for service. In addition to serving, our Police Department, Fire Departments and Dispatch serves two ambulance services and 10 other fire departments. All of our dispatchers meet state training requirements, and we are still poised to keep providing quality dispatching services in the region. Department of Public Works maintains 114 miles of roads and 17 miles of sidewalks, including plowing, sanding, salting, and grading. Steve Buergard, the director, and Public Works crews work very diligently maintaining our roads and sidewalks, stormwater systems, water and sewer systems, as well as town buildings and parks. Storm response kept DPW crews and equipment busy through November of this last year. With assistance from several outside towns and private contractors, the department was able to get all 78 roads that were unpassable following the July 31st storm open. I was looking back in that last year's presentation, I said that our membrane filtration plant would be open in November. Well, that didn't happen. Partially delays from storms, partially delays from supply chains, et cetera, et cetera, but it is a rather large project. It is now 85% complete and with a new scheduled startup day in May. And then the wastewater treatment facility took delivery, delivery of some of our solids, dewatering equipment, and began processing our own, our own solids this last year, so that we no longer have to contract that work out. So of course, these departments are not successful without support from the management team. This includes Finance Officer, Assistant Town Manager, the Administration Manager and Administrative Assistant, Town Clerk, Town Treasurer's Office, Zoning Administrator, Code Compliance Officer, and the Assessor. As well as our reliance on boards and volunteers. This is just a list of, of, I don't think this is complete. I think there's even more on here. But if anybody out there wants to be part of any board commission, not all are elected. Some of them are appointed and can be appointed with just a motion from the select board. But if you have any interest in volunteering your time and being part of this community, please come see me, and I'll point you in the right direction. So now on to the budget information. This budget information can be found starting on page 23 of the town reports. So the process is how we develop our budget is quite simple. The management team delivers a draft budget. It's reviewed publicly, and the select board opens meetings to public comment before they finalize it and bring it to the voters at town meeting. As most of you may know, the St. Johnsbury votes the budgets by Australian ballot, so once the budget is approved, the board cannot, once it's approved by the board, it cannot be revised and is simply a yes/no ballot. and is simply a yes/no ballot question on the ballot during Town Meeting tomorrow. Tax rates are then set by the Select Board in August after budgets are adopted. Tax rates, the Select Board doesn't have the authority to collect more taxes than what was approved by the voters, but they can reduce that budget, and we have done that in the past on one occasion. So, just for some numbers. Total revenues of eleven million seven hundred and forty-seven thousand three ninety-one. General Fund at five billion four hundred and forty-seven thousand nine oh four. Special Services Fund, one million nine hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. Highway Fund, four million one hundred and seventy-nine dollars two hundred and twenty-two. Parking Meter Fund at eighty-four thousand five hundred, and a Recreation Fund of eighty-five thousand. So, these are the revenues that we get, all-inclusive. This doesn't just include taxes, but it includes pilot payments, any revenue gathered from fees and fines, as well as any anticipated grant revenues or transfers from the reserves. Approximately three point eight million dollars of our revenues come from sources other than taxes. On the expenses side of things, we start with the Town Manager's Office at six hundred and twenty-eight thousand four oh nine. Clerk and Treasurer is at one eighty-four eight seventy-seven and one fifty-two nine seventy-seven. Primarily, these are the costs of salaries and benefits. The Board of Civil Authorities, eight thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars to cover elections anticipated in twenty-five, twenty-six. The Assessor's Office at one hundred and seventeen two fifty-eight. And that's continued contracting with New England Municipal Consultants as our Assessor. Economic Development Budget of a hundred and sixty-nine thousand sixty-five. It includes tax payments to the industrial park, as well as continues to fund, to develop a rental housing incentive program and our designated downtown contributions. Zoning and Planning, one hundred and four thousand nine eighty-six, and is primarily labor costs for a full-time planning and zoning administrator. And then Maintenance, seventy-seven five seventy-three. This was added into our budget last year. It primarily covers our cleaning costs for our buildings. Code Enforcement, a hundred and twenty-five thousand four oh one. And then Public Safety Building is forty-two thousand dollars. It includes heating, utilities, building maintenance expenses. And Special Services Fund. So yeah, we touched base on... So the Dog Control, six thousand dollars. Board of Selectmen is six thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars, and this consists of some training expenses, but it's mostly the stipends to the Select Board. Our Dispatch Center is eight hundred and sixteen thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars. And it's important to understand that our dispatch costs are also spread out over our other dispatching agencies. So we bill surrounding communities for, based on call volume, and we get about three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in revenue from surrounding communities to run our dispatch. The Fire Department is one million five hundred and sixty-six thousand three hundred and thirty. To note in this budget, we have included one additional position in the Fire Department. Solid Waste, forty thousand dollars. That's our household hazardous waste days that we share with the town of Burke. Cemetery is at thirty-seven thousand one forty-eight. Primarily, cost of that is mowing, grounds maintenance. And it's seen some increases recently as we've taken ownership of the St. J Center Cemetery north of the mall. Palmero Building, a hundred and forty-seven four seventy-eight. That includes heating and building utilities, as well as minor building maintenance. And bond payments for when the Palmero Building was improved recently. So that gives a total General Fund expenses, or... So, General Fund, sorry. That's one million two hundred and eighteen thousand nine sixty-eight. That includes our audits, our IT, as well as our legal services. Beautification is included in there. And then, a large portion of this is the special appropriations, which is included in that number and are voted on individually by the taxpayers or by the voters. And so our total General Fund expenses is five million four hundred and forty-seven thousand nine oh four. Special Services Fund, this is primarily the Police Department, which is one million six hundred and thirty-two thousand three hundred and fifty-three, which is mostly labor costs. Special Services Expense, three hundred and eighteen four hundred and twelve. So same with in the General Fund. That's the IT, the audits, legal services, as well as our transfer from the PD to Dispatch. And so our total Special Services Fund expense of one million nine hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. Highway Fund starts off with a Highway Garage and Equipment at four hundred and forty-nine thousand six hundred and eighty-two. This includes all expenses included in maintaining our equipment fleet, as well as labor for the mechanic. Summer Maintenance is one million three hundred and sixty-nine thousand five thirty-four. It includes labor costs and summer work, materials such as calcium chloride, gravel, culvert stitching materials. Winter Maintenance is one million thirty-six thousand three twenty. Beyond labor, the biggest item here is winter salt, and are happy to also be able to report that we have secured winter, or salt for the remaining winter through a Canadian vendor in the last week. So the whole salt crisis piece that everybody's worried about is no longer of concern. Street Safety and Traffic, a hundred and forty-nine thousand nine eighty-one. Those are utility costs for overhead lights, signage, as well as summer help for line striping and the painting. Highway Fund of one million one hundred and seventy-three thousand seven oh four. Beyond the typical IT and audit and legal costs, this fund includes debt services for equipment replacement, as well as highway share of payments for infrastructure projects. So the total Highway Fund expenses is four million one hundred and seventy-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars. So the other two pieces of our budget. Parking Meter Fund is sixty-eight thousand two hundred and thirty-five. Includes labor costs for enforcement and administration, with some funding for signage and office supplies. And this is funded through parking fees and fines. And then the Rec Department has increased to eighty-five thousand dollars to provide a transition from the Rec... Recctor from St. Johnsbury Academy to the town of St. Johnsbury. So in summary, this is the funds that are raised by taxes. So on the General Fund, three million five hundred and fifty-two thousand six thirty-four. The Special Appropriations is three hundred and thirty-six thousand eight ninety. And those are asked and voted on individually. The Special Services or the PD is one million five hundred and seventy-five thousand four eighty-four. And the Highway Fund is two million four hundred and six thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars. So what does this mean? And we get this question enough, I thought it was so. Outside the Special Services, this will be an increase of sixty-six dollars and fifty-three cents per hundred thousand dollars worth of value, which represents about five point eight nine percent increase over what was paid last year. Inside the Special Services District, the increase is seventy-one dollars and seventeen cents per hundred thousand dollars value, or a three point seven nine percent increase. So total municipal taxes paid per hundred thousand dollars of value. I don't have to jump through all the different hoops the school gets to to try to figure out their calculations on impacts of taxes. It's much more direct. So outside the Special Services District, it's one million one hundred and ninety-six thousand and sixty cents per hundred thousand dollars worth of value. And inside the Special Services District, you'd be paying one thousand nine hundred and three dollars and thirty cents. And I can turn it back over to David.
That's easier than the stairs.
If there are any questions, again, approach the mic and say your name and ask your question or make your comment. And Chad will only be too happy to answer.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Lenny Girardi, and I live in the northwestern part of the town, probably about as far out of the Special Services District as you can get. I guess, as a question for Chad, it's an issue I've raised before. I noticed that there's a transfer from the General Fund to the Special Services Fund of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, same as it was last year. That hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer represents about seven point seven percent of the General Fund underwriting the Special Services Budget, which is principally for police. That serves the Special Services District, but not the rest of the town. I guess I would ask Chad if you could, again, explain why we're doing that transfer. The town in general hasn't asked for police coverage for the hinterlands. I would point out that the benefits of police coverage in a Special Services District benefits people from Burke, Linden, Danville, Barnett, New York City, as much as it benefits people from outside the Special Services District in St. Johnsbury. But I would appreciate if you could explain and justify again that transfer. Thank you.
Really surprised I'm getting this question. Thank you, Lenny.
One additional question. There were forty-five hundred and twenty-nine incidents that the Police Department responded to in two thousand twenty-four. And perhaps you know, or could help us with the number of those that were responses or incidents outside the Special Services District?
I do not have that information available to me right now, but I will look at it with the Chief and Dispatch first thing tomorrow. So, the justification for that. And if I could, if I could transfer money from New York City into our Police Department budget, I would do it in a second, especially if they're going to benefit from it. But I think you touched on it, is there is benefit to it. And last year, I used myself as an example, and I have no problem doing that. I work for a not-for-profit, so the town of St. Johnsbury doesn't pay property taxes. So they don't... My office doesn't pay for police services. But when I'm at my office, you better bet I've got police services. If something happens to my car, I'm not going to call state police. I'm not going to call surrounding towns. I'm going to call the St. Johnsbury Police Department. My son went to school at this school, which doesn't pay taxes, and he benefited from police coverage. Same is true for people when they're visiting churches. I do think that we need to look at how our Police Department is paid for as a whole. Let's face it, crime isn't only happening in the village areas. I know you've got state police to call, but state police oftentimes calls our Police Department to provide the backup. And vice versa. And we've seen a huge support from the state police in the last few months. If we were going to talk about going to the Town Line Police Department, it's not anything that I have any intention of trying to sneak into any budgets. I think that's a conversation that needs to be had as an entire community. So I do feel that, I live outside the Special Services District. I feel I'm getting police services that I'm asking people inside the Special Services to pay for at an unfair rate. And so that's where the transfer initially came from. I think if we were to use the assessed value of every not-for-profit in the town of St. Johnsbury, that transfer would be much, much higher. And that may be something that we should be evaluating, and I'm sure that you'll be at those conversations. And I look forward to the engaged conversation about that, Lenny.
Anyone else?
Can you just explain a little bit more that...
Your name, please?
Mark Camp, St. Johnsbury resident. Can you explain a little bit more about the transfer of the Recreation Budget from the Academy to the town?
Yeah, so currently in this year's budget, so I don't even know what year it was that the Academy took over Recreation in St. Johnsbury, but it was ten, fifteen years ago. It used to be a town-run department. We had our Rec Director. When the Armory was shuttered, St. J Academy took the Rec Department from the town for a fee of ten thousand dollars a year and said, "We will run our rec programming for the town of St. Johnsbury." I think there was fear, and I wasn't... I was a resident in town back then. I think there was fear that budget cuts were going to lose the rec programming for our community, which would be devastating. So the Academy, in their interest, decided, "We're going to go ahead and run this program for the town." That number has changed over the years, and now it's a fifty thousand dollar a year payment. So that's all that we draw in tax revenue to pay for the rec programming. The Academy does collect and use the fees for people that are participating. It's a pay-as-you-play program. But in recent years, the Academy's approached us and said, "We really think this should be shifted back to the town." We're still going to be a partner. We still have facilities that we can use. And I'm hoping that I'm seeing, my Academy people up there shaking their head saying, "Oh, of course, we're going to help." But they really thought that the programming should get transferred back to the town to preserve it. Did create a Rec Committee, Town Rec Committee. We hired a consultant. They did an evaluation of what we have for recreational programming in here in town, and they agreed and made the recommendation. So the eighty-five thousand dollars represents the money that we normally would spend at the Academy, plus, it's really just taking that employee, a Rec Director, and making them a town employee and taking back over the rec programming, so. I hope I didn't make it more confusing. I do that sometimes.
Okay, I guess we'll move on to, if anybody wants to comment on special appropriation articles. Approach the mic, give your name, and talk about your organization.
Good evening. I'm Adam Kane. I'm the Executive Director of the Fairbanks Museum. So, when I spoke last year, I offered a preemptive apology for what was coming for the Eclipse. And so I just want to follow that up with a tremendous thank you to the town. We, the museum, continues to have really positive things come out of the Eclipse. So I just want to say a huge thank you, because I know it was a tremendous effort and pain in the butt for a lot of people. Except apparently for Chad, and Chad, no, we won't be doing that again. I'm sorry.
What article is, what article number is yours, do you know?
I don't know the number off the top of my head, but I'm there now. And I'll be short. So the Fairbanks Museum is requesting an appropriation of sixty-three thousand dollars, which is the same amount that we have requested for many years. In two thousand twenty-four, we saw four thousand one hundred and seventy-four residents from St. Johnsbury use the benefit that comes from that appropriation, which is free unlimited admission to the museum. We really encourage St. J residents to use that as much as possible. That number was a forty percent increase over our two thousand twenty-three numbers from St. J residents, so we're just thrilled with that. So the museum, if you have not been there lately, we have the new Science Annex, which opened up last year. We just put in a whole series of new exhibits related to insects. A great exhibit from the American Museum of Natural History, exhibit on ant colonies, new alcove on human ancestors. We'll have the Native Butterfly House this summer. And we're, this year, we'll be offering about twenty-five weeks of summer vacation camps either between, or, say, vacation camps, either between, at the museum or at Matzinger Forest in Danville. So we really invite everyone to please participate in the museum and come visit. We love to see St. J residents there. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Casey Gwell, and I'm the new Director at the Athenaeum. And I am here to speak to the Athenaeum's request for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, which has been our request for quite a few years now. That amount makes up about twenty percent of our budget. And that twenty percent is all used on meeting public needs. So it's used for books, children's books, and adult books, and young adult books. It's used for both electronic and print materials for magazines, for newspapers. It pays for our public computers and our electronic resources. It pays for our interlibrary loan and our homeschool services we offer. It pays for our outreach to the kindergartens and the hands-on art activities we do with them. And our outreach to daycares and preschools. We worked with about thirteen different ones last year. We worked with about thirteen different ones last year. So, that's what we are using the money for, and we hope you'll support. Thank you.
Welcome to the community.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Connie Sleeth, I am here on behalf of the Good Living Senior Center. I'm going to read our, our mission statement. It's to enrich the lives of seniors through the high-quality programs, activities, trips, and events we offer to the Northeast Kingdom or St. Johnsbury Senior Community Center. The things that we do that people don't know, our seniors are our family, our friends, our neighbors, they have since COVID become more secluded and reclusive in our communities, not just in Vermont, but across New England. And as you know, we have a very high senior population here. So, this, the Good Living Senior Center, our office is housed in the St. Johnsbury House. We're not a part of that, that community, but we have an office there, and that's where most of our events are held. We have educational classes from estate planning to Medicaid, Medicare, to senior fraud programs. We have a couple times a month, local artists playing music, we take trips, we take a cruise every summer, we go to Jean's Playhouse in the winter at Christmas time. We are this week going to the Vermont Flower Show, it is almost an entirely sold-out trip. We're picking up some hitchhikers from Hardwick, some seniors from there, so that's really fun, that'll be a fun day on Friday. So, oh, we have four seats available still, we are almost sold out. The rest of our monthly calendar is filled with things like bingo, mahjong, board games, just lots of different activities for seniors to get together, meet each other, meet new friends, and do lots of wonderful things. We are requesting twenty thousand dollars, like we have for the last several years. We hope we have your support, we're excited to continue, grow, and as we have been growing and with your support. Thanks so much.
Thank you. You look familiar.
So do you. Scott Beck from St. Johnsbury, past president of the St. Johnsbury Kiwanis Club, and I'd just like to speak to Article fourteen. Article fourteen is a twenty-nine thousand dollar request for monies to operate the Kiwanis Pool this summer. It costs seventy-five thousand dollars to run the pool for a full summer, and twenty-nine thousand dollars will, will do the rest with fundraising. So, we would appreciate that. I'd also like to, just to tell the audience that this will be the Kiwanis Pool's eighty-second Summer of Swimming, the kids first swim in that pool just after D-Day, that's how long it's been. It is starting to show its age, and you'll notice some construction here, and in April, we're having the pipes all redone underneath the pool at significant cost, and then hopefully before next swimming season, we'll have the, all of the concrete renovated, rehabilitated, and at that point, it'll look like a new pool, even though it'll be eighty-three years old. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andrea Otto from Catamount Arts, right here in St. Johnsbury, and I'm here on behalf of Article twenty, which is appropriations request for Catamount Arts, as well as Article twelve, which is in a request for funding for First Night North. First Night North, what started out as a federally funded program to provide substance-free New Year's Eve, family-friendly programming all over the U.S. When that funding ended, pretty much every First Night ended throughout the country, except for here in St. Johnsbury, where it has continued on for over thirty years because of community support. First Night is a really extraordinary event in which historical institutions all over town open their doors and welcome the community, and thousands of folks come into town to celebrate the New Year through arts and culture programming that is all ages-friendly, substance-free. People get fed, people get to dance, and just get to be together to celebrate the New Year. Funding is so vital to keep it going, because every single artist gets paid, as well as a lot of free tickets, buttons that get distributed to families that can't afford to bring their kids. So, thank you for supporting that work. Catamount Arts is celebrating its fiftieth year this year, providing arts and cultural programming throughout the region. It's, it's so rooted in St. Johnsbury, but the whole community here in the Northeast Kingdom sees a tremendous impact because of arts and culture programming that happens here through Final Fridays, through the free music at Dog Mountain, to free community films in the Arts Center, to providing space for local folks to get together and play music and learn from each other, to going out into other communities and helping support those communities, have free concerts, and create spaces for their communities to gather. I think when I look at this appropriations list, I just keep thinking about the social isolation that we see. The Levitt Foundation that helps support Dog Mountain talks about how social isolation impacts our physical health in huge ways, and how when you have cultural institutions that come together and create spaces where people can talk to their friends and neighbors and feel like they belong, that it actually makes people physically healthier and just boosts overall well-being. So, thank you for supporting, literally keeping our communities healthier.
Thank you.
My name is Amanda Cocker, and I live in St. Johnsbury, and I'm also the Executive Director of Umbrella. And so, I was here to speak on behalf of the appropriation request number twenty-one, which is for ninety-five hundred dollars for Umbrella's services. Umbrella's mission is cultivating a Northeast Kingdom where all people thrive, free from abuse and oppression. And our programs range from providing advocacy for survivors of domestic and sexual violence, which means supporting them through court procedures, if that's what they choose to do, sheltering them here in our community, as well as supporting them should they go to the hospital or need other healthcare services. We also provide a lot of prevention programming in our communities, and we, we provide educational workshops with our partners at the Academy and the St. Johnsbury School. In addition, we have family-based services, which include Kingdom Childcare Connection, which connects families to childcare financial assistance, as well as supervised visitation for families who need that in our, in our town, in our region as well. We rely on public funds to support the important work that we do, and we, a mix of private funds as well, but in these uncertain times that we're in, relying on, you know, town-generated funding is ever more important. So, we really, I really thank you for considering our appropriation request this year. In St. Johnsbury, we served approximately six hundred and twenty families in fiscal year twenty-four, so we certainly have a big impact here, and we appreciate your support in advance. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am not speaking on behalf of a numbered appropriations request, which is why I was waiting, but I am the alternate on the community governed NEK Broadband Board for St. Johnsbury, and we just generally share a little bit of a quick update at town meetings. So, the biggest news is that we're no longer NEK Broadband, we're NEK CV, having merged with CV Fiber in August. This year, at the end of two thousand and twenty-four, we had installed six hundred and eighty-one miles of fiber, our target for this year is close to twelve hundred, and we expect to double the number of households we're serving by the end of two thousand and twenty-five, which will be pushing fifteen thousand households in that shared community. So, I think the biggest other note would be that we plan to submit an application to the federal broadband equity access and deployment program this spring. Many people know that as BEED funding. The estimate for NEK CV territory is that it will cost over two hundred and twenty-five million dollars to complete the upfront infrastructure install for that territory. We have at this point raised a hundred million of that. So, the BEED funding is a really key source for the additional dollars that we need to complete this, this massive infrastructure project. I wanted to raise it tonight, because there will be an opportunity for community members, community organizations, town leaders, to submit letters of request as a part of that application. So, you'll be hearing more from Nick, who is our primary representative, and myself on that, as that application comes up. And then, the other thing we wanted to share is that we have a number of open job postings right now, and we really want to hire for those roles locally and from the NEK community. And last but not least, we have a really robust workforce development program for install techs. So, all of that information is on the website, nekbroadband.org. So, thank you.
I think that may be it. If it is, we'll see you tomorrow at Depot Square for voting on town offices and the warning articles. Thank you for coming.